All right, it is seven o'clock. We'll call this meeting of the Vid- Vedonia Village Board to order. Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Before we move on, I want to just note for the record that the video for the recording of the meeting is not functioning. So we have audio being recorded, but no video. The next, I, uh, we need a roll call.
President Blim.
Here.
Trustee Eifer. Natalie, if you're there, could you unmute yourself? Oh, thank you. Um, trustee Frank.
Here.
Trustee Abedlin.
Here.
Trustee Doorworth.
Here.
Trustee Siri.
Here.
Trustee Van R.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public comment and opportunity for members of the community to present their opinions to the board about topics that are on the agenda or not on the agenda. You are limited to five minutes per person. Does anybody have any public comment? The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda approving the minutes of the September fourth, Village Board of Trustees meeting. The approving of the general fund, water and sewer invoices, and approving the temporary Class D retailers license for Divine Savior Catholic Church Trivia Night on October eighteenth.
Motion, motion approve consent agenda.
I have, I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, we need to take a roll call vote.
Oh, that's me.
That's you?
Sorry. President Blim.
Uh, I affirm.
Trustee Eifer.
Aye.
Trustee Frank.
Aye.
Trustee Abedlin.
Aye.
Trustee Doorworth.
Aye.
Trustee Siri.
Aye.
Trustee Van R.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the presentation, the wastewater treatment plant facilities planning update. Phil Dusek? Dusek, thanks. Sorry about that. Stand Engineering. There we go.
All right. You're at the top. It's a green light on.
Give it a tap, does it thump?
There we go. I think we're live. Okay. Well, good evening, everyone. Um, so I've been before the board a couple of times talking about the treatment plant project. Um, so I had just a very brief presentation to give an overview of the facilities plan. Um, so the first step in doing one of these large construction projects that's funded with DNR is to do what's called a facilities plan. So I'll go through the wastewater treatment plant upgrades, facilities plan. Um, so the major project drivers, aging equipment, um, so a lot of the equipment being proposed to be replaced as part of this project is over forty years old. Um, usually design life of this sort of equipment is twenty-ish years. Um, so it's well beyond its, its design life. Um, safety, um, improving chemical handling spaces, removing the bio tower. Uh, the bio tower is a existing process that's over forty years old and is just, um, degrading. Uh, simplify operations. Um, so we're moving to processes and upgrading equipment. Um, WD and our permit requirements just continue to meet all the permit requirements that are in the village's permit. Um, additional wet weather treatment capacity. So when we have these large rate events, um, this project will provide more flexibility for the treatment plant operations and then just additional redundancy. So equipment can be worked on and still have, asking the treatment. Uh, so here, this is a aerial photo of the treatment plant. Now just kind of points out the, the major aspects of the project, the post-project. Um, so these six tanks here are the aeration, or three of them right now are aeration tanks and three are aerobic digesters. Um, so the plan is to convert all these to an extended aeration system. So they all become aeration tanks. Um, the existing primary clarifier and bio tower will be demolished. Those exist, those, um, those processes are at the end of their useful life. So those are the processes that are over forty years old. Um, the tankage is planned to be repurposed as aerobic digestion. Uh, planning to add a third final clarifier. So right now there are two final clarifiers. Um, so this last summer, or summer before, the week was Eric had a clarifier out of service. He was down one clarifier for an extended period during summer. If there's any kind of rate events or whatnot, that'll, it's very difficult to operate the plant. Uh, so this one would provide that additional redundancy and just help with overall treatment. Having a third clarifier helps with more solids and just produce better, better effluence. Um, to go with the clarifier, there's a, what's called a splitter structure. So flow from the aeration tanks comes into this tank and splits and you can only to breathe by the virus. Um, so that, that's needed with the third clarifier and then a red, so that's the pumping station also. And it goes with that same project or this portion of the project. That pumping station provides flexibility for the treatment plant to return and waste their sludge. Right now it's all manual operations. Turn the gates, this would bottom it, that, um, process. Replacing the mechanical fine screen. Um, so the existing screen is one of the things that did fail in August during a weather event. So it was out for a day or so. The screen removes plastics, air, those sorts of things. So they don't get into the pumps, don't get into the sludge. Uh, so, this space also has some cold issues that wanted to bring it up to current cold standards. So as part of replacing the screen, the roof will be replaced and then gas safety or gas detection equipment, those sorts of things will be added to bring it up to the cold. Um, the existing chemical phosphorus removal equipment is parked in the back of the garage. This is the garage where vehicles are stored. And then the chemicals are in that same space, which isn't ideal. These are corrosive chemicals, uh, that you don't want vehicles and other things stored next to. Um, so the plan here would be to remove that equipment of forty years old to a tankage. So that will be disposed of and then a new chemical phosphorus removal building in that location. And then this space would be repurposed into additional fresh space, which is lacking at the plants. Um, and then the last thing, uh, will be the new generator. Uh, the existing generator now that again is forty years old, difficult to get apart and whatnot, and it's undersized as far as being able to run the entire plant. So the new generator would provide redundancy. We can still keep that generator as long as it's functional. Uh, but this would be the primary generator. And then if that had an issue with this one, still be there assuming it works. We wouldn't, no money would be put into that generator, even as long as it's functional. Uh, then the new generator will be able to run the entire plant. So that's, I have an overview of the major pieces of the project. Um, do you want to have any questions here? Or do you want to ask?
So that, that splitter with that, then the like electronically controlled where one of the clarifiers needs to be worked on, then you can control sending flow.
With that, since the gates, there's three bidet gates in there that will be closed off, shut down the flow of that clarifier. It would typically just be manual, but there'd be a nut on it. So you can take a, a drill, a drill and close it quicker. But yeah, we wouldn't buy me that gutter, just because it's closed and apparently it was recently, once twice a year. Good. Um, so estimated capital cost. Uh, so this isn't bidet cost, this is capital cost. This is, we, engineering and geotechnical work, those sorts of things too. Um, so the first one, we have rankings here. Uh, the highest rated project would be conversion of extended, conversion to extended aeration. So that's sort of demolishing the primary clarifier, bio tower and converting aeration tanks. So that project is two million is our opinion of cost. Um, and again, if you don't do this project, then the bio tower had to be pre-kept. The primary clarifier had to be pre-kept. So there's costs there, one way or another. And this comes out to be similar to the cost of redoing all the bio tower and you get the additional flexibility with the rest pumping station that you wouldn't have. When you look at just replacing everything at a time, same cost, but you don't have that additional flexibility. Uh, number two, the chemical building, uh, one point five million. Uh, three is the new clarifier, rest of the pumping station. So there's, like, a splitter structure. So those are all in line. So those are, you do one and you're going to want to get any of the other ones. Uh, place some chemical screen at the generator. And then I didn't talk about this one, but there's some improvements that could be done on the existing final clarifiers just to help with what's called blockulation. So the, um, solids in the tank come together better and settle better. Um, that one we have as a lower priority. It could be completed in any time. It's not really a huge advantage to doing it as part of, of our project. Uh, another thing I wanted to go through is the bidding strategy. So we're planning to, what's called, uh, doing base bid. So the base project would be these items one and three, just because they're kind of all tied together a lot more so than the rest of the items, which are a little bit more standalone. Um, so this would be the base bid, the contract, and then these other items would be bid alternatives. So you get a price form and then can decide, okay, the prices came in, well, what we thought that are going to be, we're going to move forward with this and this. They came in low, maybe we can add this, then they came in high, maybe we can't do everything. So it gives some flexibility. Once you have the bid results to, uh, have, tweak the budget to what the budget allows. So the total base bid cost is four point three million. Then the total of all projects is eight point two. And then it is planned to be funded by the mark unknown. So it will be ten percent principal forgiveness that the village is eligible for. And then it'd be a loan interest only to, and it's two point something percent. Questions on this slide?
Just, just so I can interrupt you quick. Um, so the board is aware with all of our planned sewer increases. Our goal for the amount of borrowing was about six point two million. And so keep that number in your mind as you're looking at the different options and adding it up. Our tolerance at this point is around that six point two million dollar mark.
Okay. Um, then the last slide is project timeline, next steps. Um, so next step would be submit this facilities plan. Any tweaks or adjustments or comments that you might want to implement them. Um, submitted to DNR. They have about a ninety day working period for facilities plans. Uh, vinyl design, we could begin that, considering that DNR is going to make major changes to our, just all members. I've never had to come back and make wholesale changes or anything. Um, there does have to be a public hearing on the facilities plan. It doesn't have to be before it's submitted to DNR. So I was suggesting that that could be ahead of, uh, a future board meeting, April Novemberish timeline. There's a thirty day public comment period. Um, so you have advertised that facility plan is here to be available for public comments. Then you can make a call here again this date. Um, so that, past that happen before DNR will approve the facilities plan. So within ninety days of submitting the facilities plan, that should be needed. Um, another key step is big water fund loan, as it's called, an I T A, it's an intent to apply in the performance evaluation ranking form. Um, so that, that puts you on the funding list for a loan for the next funding schedule. Um, so that's due October thirty first. So submit drawings and specs to DNR. We have that as June twenty twenty six. So those would be the ninety percent drawings and specifications to go to DNR for their approval. Um, the main water fund loan application, uh, will be submitted, earliest it can be submitted is July first. So that, that would be timeline for that. If we want to submit it as soon as possible. Um, DNR drawings inspection approved September and potential project bid date of October twenty twenty six. Um, earliest you can close on a loan is about December twenty twelve things. Then construction, usually there's at least eighty-five days, it's even up to a hundred twenty from bid dates. When contracts are signed just to secure funding and whatnot. Um, so instruction I have is first quarter twenty twenty seven, and they may even wait longer. Depending on availability of equipment, they may not all start. So they have some of their electrical gear, those sorts of things inside. And then it's about a two-year project. So construction completion, December twenty twenty. So your first loan payment would actually be somewhere, um, December twenty twenty eight or twenty twenty nine. The year around the U S K pages. Questions on this?
Um, kind of to do with the schedule, but it kind of comes back to your previous slide with the bio tower. Um, I guess what do you foresee it, I mean, because this is first quarter twenty twenty seven and then no completion until December twenty twenty eight.
Yeah.
Do you see us needing to do any major repairs to our current bio tower in that meantime? Where we're spending extra on this bio tower that we can tend to?
Yeah, that's a good question. So priorities tend to just probably there now. I'll see what it's going to be. And then it's probably a roll die, so.
Uh, well, there's supposed to be three pumps in there, uh, two have failed and they're gone. So the one that's left, if that one fails, I, I think then we have to switch over all air lifting, right? So. I don't know. I mean, how long supply would've been after it closed off? Two years. So we don't even go in there because everything's failing.
The pump will be the biggest concern that one out, and obviously the big end will be.
I mean, is, is the wall's going to fall over? No, but everything inside is coming apart.
I mean, as far as like the added expense of like, okay, the, the new project or that new conversion would be two million. But then are we going to stick a million into our current bio tower between now and December of twenty twenty eight to try to keep it?
Right. I think our goal is to stick as little to no money into the bio tower. We've fixed things at the plant that if that bio tower would fail, that we could run a different operation. But it's not ideal. I mean, it's, you know, you're going to the backup plan, but there is one in case that does fail.
That's what I had. Other comments, questions?
I'm just curious. Uh, obviously we will get, uh, what you've got here. Four point three is the base bid. What you've heard, that's a current estimate, right?
That is, um, weighted to your bids in twenty twenty six. I maybe this agent played twenty twenty seven, maybe the contract was being able to get and say, well, afterwards twenty twenty seven, after twenty twenty eight, so maybe you should really inflate to twenty twenty seven. They all didn't do that except it to twenty twenty six. Basically it took twenty dollars and five percent.
Okay. So that is, uh, capital cost. And also, uh, just concerned because I've had conversations with, uh, Dr. Paulus about lead time on some of these items. Uh, I'm just concerned about, like, what kind of lead types? I know we talked about a couple of things that was like eighteen months from the war for lead time. Is that going to extend our, um, construction duration?
That's right. After two years, um, you've seen electrical gear has been the biggest delay. It's been about a year to get, against these things and those sorts of things. Generators are another one.
So yeah, that's why even being able to start in just that, you know, after we get bids, being able to start and are we going to be sitting and waiting for?
They may, they may wait till fall of twenty twenty seven to break grounds because they're waiting to get more things before they, they, you know, fully mobilize and start work. But I think the two years is realistic. When they serve it in the next two years, it's going to be on some contract.
Yeah.
Of course, that would suggest to me that moving forward on this now, given that it's going to take eighteen months to two years to get this into any kind of position where it's starting to get done. Moving on this now is an important step. Any other comments, question? Thank you, Phil. Report on operations of the village. We'll skip to the village administrator, Administrator Jenkins.
Not you. No, you're good.
Everything I say, you repeat anyways.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. President. Um, our team met with W E D C recently and talked about various, uh, state grant opportunities. Uh, that's the Wisconsin Economic Development Council. Um, a lot of their grants focus on community development and, and, you know, connecting money to businesses. So one of the things that, um, that we wrote a grant for was to start up some sort of facade improvement program. We didn't need to be very specific on it, but we just threw it out, threw a dart out there to see if we can get the money. If we did, we'd get up to fifty thousand dollars, uh, for that kind of program. So if awarded, then obviously we'd be really excited. It would flesh out what that program would look like. But think of, uh, like the new flooring company with their new, uh, facade and signs and things like that. It would be a program that our local businesses could utilize and tap into that money, but it just needs to flow through a government order for them to have access to it. Um, so that is exciting. The twenty twenty six operating budget is nearly done. Uh, we've completed that draft. There's a couple state aid numbers that we're waiting on. Um, and then we'll finalize that. Um, I can tell you that we had a slight increase to our general levy and by slight, I mean by about two thousand dollars, which is real exciting. Um, and then, uh, when you add all that and divided by our total assessed value, we do anticipate some sort of decrease in the mill rate. Um, I'm not going to make any promises of what that is exactly, um, but we're looking forward to that. And that's kind of what we predicted coming into, uh, this next year anyway. Um, I do want to give a shout out to Treasure Upson. Um, she's done a lot of cleanup, as you guys know, with our fund balances. And because of that, we've been able to, uh, find some creative ways that we would need to spend out in other areas and then help to build up our general fund reserves, which was one of the notes from our auditor. Um, so I appreciate her work in helping us look into that. And I look forward to sharing that with the finance committee coming soon. Um, we are in the final steps of applying for a grant, uh, S T P grant for the reconstruction of Martin. Uh, for those that have been on the board for a while, you remember that we applied for a grant for that road three years ago now, um, and did not get it. Uh, so this is just another round of that funding. Um, this would be complete reconstruction, road and utilities underneath from about where the railroad tracks are, then all the way to the west out of the village. Um, so I'll let you know if we get any positive news on that for sure. Um, a little update on the Fox Glen property. Uh, a firm has been hired by the mortgage company or bank that holds that, uh, loan. And so they've begun their own kind of cleanup and remediation process. Uh, we've had some brief conversations with them. I know they're connected with our utility to get the water meter and shut off, uh, those items. But that's just positive to see. I'm glad that it's not abandoned and it's not going to sit abandoned. They're aware of the issues. Um, and I'm assuming that they're going to take care of it in whatever way that they deem, uh, is financially responsible for them. Um, paving on Wenzel in Wisconsin has begun. If you've been down there, uh, it's pretty visible. The milling just completed today of Wisconsin. Uh, they were planning on paving Wenzel, uh, this week, but apparently some equipment broke down. And so now they're kicking it to next week. Um, but if you've seen, seen it and gone down there and just looked at the grading, I hope that you noticed that, uh, it's a lot bigger than maybe we thought of it in our heads. Um, Eric and I did inspection down there at the, at the road at the beginning of this week, and we really emphasized that we need as much parking as we can down there. Even if the, even if the schematic said one thing, like, how could we squeeze another space, you know, out of their safely to accommodate all the sports that happen down there? Um, so you'll definitely see an increase on the parking lot side of Marie Kraus. And then we've added about just like four foot, four feet of a buffer on both sides of the pavement along Wenzel. So that way it allows additional parking there too. Um, so that's awesome to see. And when it fills up during baseball season, there'll be, uh, plenty of room for all of them, but it's never, never enough. Um, moving on, um, I put together a meeting of those Ock County administrators. It sounds like that they had, they had met on a regular basis a few years ago, um, and then stopped for whatever reason. And as, as the newbie or newer person in the county, I reached out to see if they wanted to meet up and they did. Um, so we're beginning to just meet and chat and collaborate and find ways that we can continue to work with each other. Um, so I'm just excited that everybody is willing to do that. The splash pad is nearing completion. The plumbing electrical work is finished. Final grading and concrete are underway. And then Quashes is coming back to finalize the features. Uh, fingers crossed that everything will be done by that first week in October. So one of the questions I wanted to ask all of you, uh, because we've had this conversation in the past. Everything will still be done in October. We still agree with, with putting the features in, testing the equipment, making sure that it's good to go. But do we want as a village to do a grand opening in October? Or should we just, you know, pick up our swimsuits and then wait until spring, uh, to do an official celebration? I ask because whatever we want to do, I want to kind of send out invitations and invite our donors and, you know, just make a big deal out of it. Um, but I wanted to ask you all in case you have a consensus on your thoughts. Do you want to meet your skivvies in the first or second week of October?
Well, it has been rather warm lately and it continues to be warm enough to do that. And even if it's a little chilly, we can still see it running and, and, and do the grand opening. I think it would be worthwhile just because everybody's been waiting so long and we keep having to push back the date. It would be nice to do something yet this year. Discussion, debate.
And thoughts?
Definitely open it up. I mean, just to, you know, do that. You just, I think people are just so excited about it and then it'll be on their mind and they'll be really excited about it in the spring. You know, once it really for real opens.
Great. Then we can plan on that. Uh, so we'll do a soft opening, so to speak, cut a ribbon, make a big deal out of it. And then we'll probably keep it open as long as weather allows. And then, uh, we'll winterize it with the staff and wait for our, our full length opening next spring. So thank you. Um, just two more things here. I wanted to thank a couple of people or recognize a couple of people. Our clerk, Michelle Johnson, for those who didn't see. Uh, completed her three-year training with UW Green Bay's Wisconsin Clerks Institute. Uh, that's a big deal. Yeah, let's give her a round of applause. That's. I can say it's a big deal because and I'll share with you all, I took one year of that course, uh, when I was with Elmwood Park and I said, nope, not for me. It's not my thing. Um, so I give her a lot of.
That is an illustration of our, our differences.
Correct. Um, but next up is official certification as a clerk. And there's a whole other step for that. So her and I've discussed, you know, what that looks like for her career and, and what those next steps might be. And then speaking of career, I want to give a shout out to Simon. As you guys all know, he's our new newest full-time DPW guy. Um, we have anointed him, so to speak, as our perks and rec lead, uh, with his background in, in engineering and design. He was just trying to find more ways to, to, uh, be a valuable member of our team. So when it comes to like laying out of parks and maintenance and even just establishing our recreation, um, activities moving forward. Uh, he's really excited to jump on board and take ownership of that. And that's something that we're certainly happy to give him an opportunity to do. So thank you to Simon for stepping up for our team.
Thank you, Administrator Jenkins. Marshall Lee is unable to be here tonight. His report is on file. Fire Chief Waker.
Well, just there, uh, we get a ten-day annual that Northern State District Fatness School, they, we also have for sharing information to all fire departments and the different things. And then developing potentially the recovery pool for any new families that are coming in, you know. Uh, the other thing that I forgot to put on there is October twelfth is our, uh, open house, our provincial week. Uh, so hope to see everybody there. It runs from ten to one. Um, and then our call volumes, uh, uh, our, our ambulance call lines are down by thirty-six year-to-date, uh, compared to last year. Uh, but our fire incidents, which includes any structured fires and also car accidents, those are up by sixteen already this year. So, uh, last year we were fifty-seven total, but that came of August for fifth year, right, for the year. So that kind of is on top of it. I don't, it's a claim. Um, that is all I have.
Thank you.
Have a question and question.
Sure.
What are we up to as far as, for the full time and?
Yeah, two full time, uh, and one part-time that are working on a regular basis for us. And we onboarded a part, a second part-time person, uh, two months. And we onboarded a part, a second part time person two months ago, and we're trying to get them implemented into our program. Soon should be two full time. And then January first, we go to another full time person. And so at the end of the whole program, at the end, the goal is three part, three full time and three part.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks.
Director Paulus, Public Works.
Report is in your package. Administrator took half of my stuff.
Welcome.
Which with the Wenzel with the paving or not paving actually helped us because there's three manholes that are above foot below grade. So it gives us some time to get them dug up and raised up. The other big thing was we took out all the sand on a fireman's park, the playground, and replaced it with wood chips. So hopefully no more grass on the sand complaints. Equipment that's fixed there. There, I mean, the park is ninety-nine. Right? Is that correct? You think when that playground went in there? So I mean, it's, it's aging. Simon and I have been going through it now and start to find what we should be replacing that gets used the most, like the stairs, the railing, the stall. But it's, I ordered some parts three weeks ago and still six weeks out, so. Meter replacements going strong and next year, starting next year, for the next five years, I believe it's sixty meters a year we have to do to stay on track. That's all I got.
All right. Well, thank you. Clerk Johnson. Oh, I'm sorry, Tom.
Yes, for the wood chips. Yep, it's what's required for playground. So, so when they fall off, they're not landing on thorns and percolations and everything.
Thank you. Clerk Johnson.
So website migration is still pretty delayed, but we're starting to gather some time sensitive data that carries an expiration date so that we can migrate that over when it's time. I was selected to participate in the West Commercial E coal book work group. So I'm excited to participate in that and help shape the way that technology is used in this state. I was also greenlit for the wet convention, the inaugural wet convention. And I'm looking forward to that opportunity as well. I think it's really important for start of our very busy election cycle in twenty twenty-six. And speaking of, I've reached out, I've started to reach out to our fabulous team of election inspectors. And we'll have a list at a meeting in November for this body to appoint. And I've updated the running for local office page on the website and our guide for candidates for anybody who's interested in running for office next year. And all the other daily operations, phone calls, building, our next welcome packets to new residents, utility payments, website, agenda minutes.
Thank you. Just for informational purposes, those interested in running for village trustee or other offices next spring, when would be the deadline for them to file paperwork?
December thirty-first, January thirty-first. I don't know. I have to look. You're like.
When they have to file paperwork by?
The deadline?
It's January sixth, right? It's the first Tuesday.
Or maybe January second this year.
That's a Friday.
I, I didn't mean to put you on the spot. I just.
Sorry. Next time.
Yeah, I think it's the first, first weekend. Well, the point is get it in in December. Yeah.
Yeah.
And we'll advertise that.
By the end of December.
And we'll advertise all of that as it starts to come up. So that the residents are aware and you guys are aware for those people, I assume.
All right. Thank you. Treasure Upson.
Just lots of the normal daily routine. Sent along some information to the county that was required this past month. And next Friday I will be attending the workhorse conference up in Mossaw on this Friday. Looking forward to that because there are software vendors, so just looking forward to networking, meeting them. And just, you know, learning if there's other better ways to utilize the software.
Thank you. Ozaki County District Two Supervisor. Don't believe they're here. Mid Moraine Municipal Association Designated Representative, Trustee Doorward.
Okay, we, we had our somewhat, we call organizational meeting. And we had during the introduction of one of our newest assembly versions. Many of you are familiar with the county board. He was on there as chair for sixty, for six years, I think it was. And he explained what his intentions are for for the assembly. There are a number of things that we can expect them to attempt to do. And he explained those having to do with the costing and, and financial support of K twelve schools and, yeah, a bunch of other things. There's, there's a number of other different things. There's a. Michelle was treasurer was to put a in with, and Mr. Retour, reporting which more closely specifies a lot of the things that I was a member of many. And is that the whole thing is in there, right?
I forwarded it to you, to the board when it came in last week. So it was all presented, his PowerPoint presentation. And so it's not part of the pack yet, but it was forwarded to you last week.
Okay, well, when that's in, they can keep that in a different spot if you want to. There's the access for. There's going to be there's going to be a, something that I'm going to be quite proud of in the new. Having to do with some of the amendments that are introduced by the the party and the board, so you can expect that the elections are going to take up a lot of items and a lot of the hot air, so to speak, in, in the governor's election. And so it's hard to see that how much, if anything, is going to get done in Madison. It's one of the reasons why they rushed to get a budget, a budget finished when they did. So they had a budget to work with. And so that's, that was about it. They had once, once again, our voice that we should really have an individual that's going to keep carrying on with this organization. Because there is a good deal of on transfer of information and information from Madison to the different counties, too. So it's not a waste of time and, and whatever. So if anybody wants to jump in there and representative, and even if you don't want to come in to represent, during a vote, you have to have an official representative. So that's why it's as, as somebody that is something we brought on as a friend, but we should have someone at least is representing, you know, and and getting used to the swing of things. And that, that would be very good idea. And that's pretty much all. Any questions?
All right. Thank you very much. Next items on the agenda, items for action and or discussion. The first item here, motion to approve C S M twenty twenty-five oh one. Applicants Village of Fredonia, Bruce and Deborah Pappy, Jennifer and William Watry. I'll turn this over to Administrator Jenkins to describe briefly.
Sure. Well, there's no further comments or changes. You guys are very familiar with this. It's gone through Plan Commission. They approved it unanimously. Now it just needs your blessing, and then we can get it signed and recorded with the county.
Do we have a motion to approve?
I have a motion to approve C S M twenty twenty-five dash oh one.
Sorry.
We have any discussion or debate? We'll have to call a roll call vote.
President Lenz.
Aye.
Trustee Ibert.
Aye.
Trustee Frank.
Aye.
Trustee Abeglin.
Aye.
Trustee Doorward.
Aye.
Trustee Seering.
Aye.
Trustee Van Roen.
Aye.
The motion passes. Next item, discussion on wastewater treatment facility plan as presented by Strand Engineering. Does anybody have any discussion comments they wish to make?
I'll just check with the nodding of heads. We're good with the schedule that Strand presented, and they can proceed.
Yeah, unless they can speed it up some.
Yeah, come on, Phil.
Do we need to buy you some more duct tape?
As of right now, no.
Okay.
We're keeping up with Mike being down there all the time. You can catch the stuff right away.
Okay.
It's running. I don't know.
Well, they just announced that they raised interest rates today. They, they, they rolled one up and the interest rates went up.
Did they lower interest rates?
They lowered interest rates by a quarter point at the last, if you're talking about the meeting of the Fed.
Yeah.
They lowered interest rates by a quarter point.
That's right, rolled one up.
Rolled one up, yes.
Yeah, rolled one up and and the prime interest rate went down. So it's going to start costing us more and more money.
I think this update is a long time coming, so I'm glad we'll be forward.
Yeah, I believe, Bill, that this started back in fifteen, thirteen? The first thing we looked at was fifteen and then five, which is a bit, so it's needed that. So it's not like we just came up with it, you know, here. It's it's been a work in progress. It's just been tweaked and hopefully your numbers are wrong and it's slower.
Are you still looking at the expansion tank rather than the water tank?
That one's in that project. Yeah, I'm not, I think bad in our office. I'm a water side. I'm just on the dirty water side.
I think Director Paulus can be commended. Both of you guys were keeping it running and fabricating repairs when you don't have part that doing whatever you can to make sure that our toilets could plug safely.
I'll second that.
And I know, like going with Phil, like B F Ds right now, the drives on the pumps, some of them are nine months to a year out. So it's been a lot of municipalities asking, you have stuff on the shelf we can use right now if we don't have anything, so. But when we do get it in, then they get the new one or they get their old one back, so. It's, but they're having the same issues, so. Trying to find parts.
Any other discussion? We can move on to the next item. Next item, discussion and possible action to set a public hearing to hear public comment on and reaction to the wastewater treatment plant facilities plan, which is a requirement of the Wisconsin D N R. Is that correct? Yes.
He suggested in November.
Yeah, we can advertise for tomorrow. I mean, there's a thirty day period for all to comment on. Usually you have a break before this meeting, except for basically just seven at six thirty or something. I can give similar type of presentation. People are here with a ton of projects.
I think that would be a good idea.
I would say I think Clerk Johnson accounted the days and.
So I have already demonstrated tonight that I don't have a calendar in front of me.
Bring one up on my tablet.
I'd like to do it on, on the first meeting in November, please.
That'd be November sixth.
Thank you.
So November sixth at six thirty? So if somebody wants to make that motion, that works for us.
Just, you can look at it.
I would like one.
I have a motion to set the public hearing for the wastewater treatment planned upgrades for November sixth at six thirty P M.
Second that. I have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion or debate? All right. Well, then we'll call a roll call vote.
President Lenz.
Aye.
Trustee Ibert.
Aye.
Trustee Frank.
Aye.
Trustee Abeglin.
Aye.
Trustee Doorward.
Aye.
Trustee Seering.
Aye.
Trustee Van Roen.
Aye.
All right, the motion passes. Next item on the agenda, discussion and possible action on Resolution twenty twenty-five fifteen pertaining to sewer rates. Administrator Jenkins, please fill us in.
Sure. Since we last discussed, we affirmed that resolution and the numbers with Ellers. So the final recommendation is a, make sure I have it right, twenty-four point seven percent increase. So what you see before you in the charts that I handed out, I know it says estimated twenty-two. That was previous. But the numbers that you see reflected in the twenty twenty-six column does reflect a twenty-four point seven percent increase. So you can see what our rates would go to and then what we are compared to like size communities. And then I'll just rehash. So we've updated this chart that you guys have seen before. But since the last meeting, we changed two things. Well, I should say three things. One, we've updated all the numbers to match what Strand just presented to you tonight. Two, you'll notice that the new garage that we had on this list, we just completely removed by, by remediating the phosphorus building. You actually get more room in that building. So that can act as the storage rather than just building a new garage. And then finally, we've moved up in the priority list, the mechanical screen, and updated those numbers. So again, we're talking with Strand and then with Director Paulus. It just became more and more evident that this is more of a need than a want, and so that moved that up here, too. So again, we're not picking and choosing right now, but based on this list here, you have our rankings of one through four is the stuff that we probably should be doing relatively soon, if you guys are in agreement with Strand's report. And then anything in green, I would argue is stuff that we can do just with regular annual cash on hand C I P allocations, and that includes the generator which he had in his presentation, too. So I think once you kind of swallow it that way, then it makes the, makes the six point two million dollars that we have available a little bit more realistic. And then when we get those bid numbers, you know, knock on wood, hopefully a little bit lower than what we're estimating, and we could probably squeeze out more of those projects as, as we recommended. And Eric and I have talked, there is like a Plan B and a Plan C if numbers come in really high. But we'll cross that bridge, you know, when we get there. But overall, the, the twenty-four point seven percent increase again is required in order for us to match the one point one percent in our sewer fund that we need to have in revenues in order to qualify for that clean water fund loan. This is just one step as we build up.
And in, and when we qualify for the clean water fund loan, that includes a lower interest rate and the debt forgiveness that we were talking about.
The ten percent forgiveness, yeah. So it takes a super six point two million.
To some extent.
Yeah, so it takes the six point two million that we're estimating and drops it down to five point six million. So that's still a big deal. That's six hundred thousand dollars that we don't have to pay.
And looking at the sewer rates on this list, we are still, even after an increase, we will still be paying lower than most of the communities around us in Ozaki County for our sewer rates. Any discussion?
Are we coming out of the hole? You can tell one by one? Or are those, you got it from them?
I think the, the, the rate increase from last year brought us out of the hole to roughly break even.
Yep.
So this is moving us into the territory where we'll be able to get this loan.
Okay. Yeah, so what you'll see in the twenty twenty six budget, I know Trustee Serin had asked about this in the past, you'll see a, a significant amount of dollars that kind of roll into our reserves for the sewer fund. Um, just because, yes, we're increasing the rates, but we don't necessarily need to spend that money right now. So it's good to stockpile it again, one, for our borrowing capacity and two, we can use that money later on then to. Tackle these other, these lower priority projects without having to borrow. I mean, I mean, just the number that. I kind of have estimated right now, we could probably knock off maybe three of these projects, maybe simultaneously while we do this other work that we're bonding for. Um, so again, that just shows the, the. Solid financial planning that we're doing as we ramp up to this. So we're not, to your point, Don drowning, you know, both literally and figuratively, um, with, with our utility, so.
Is there an ability to like, uh, push it off for a, a year at all? Like, is there a way to like revisit it next year or a certain timeline?
I mean, you can, but then when you go out to do the borrowing, then you're gonna have to just have a larger jump, right? You could choose to not increase it at all right now. But then next year, when we do the bonding, then we're gonna have to increase it even more to make up for the lack of the year that we, we missed. And I, and the philosophy of the board was to kind of ramp up over three years rather than jacking people right away.
Um, but initially we were looking at like a sixty five to seventy percent increase. Last year we had a twenty three ish.
Yeah.
Increase, and so this year we're getting twenty four percent point seven. Uh, we're still under that, and then depending on what we come back with our bids, we may or may not do the final increase a year from now. Depending on what's going on, so.
Yeah, I would argue depending on timing, you might have a year reprieve like next year. If we don't get the bid numbers. And even if we get them, if we don't need that money until a year later, then that could be your reprieve, right? You give people that, that year break and then maybe we, we kick it up and the following year, we actually need to start paying our, our principal interest payments. So.
The twenty four point seven seven is just so that we can get the lower heading spread to get the law of the clean.
And also to get bids on prices that are. At twenty twenty six prices rather than twenty twenty seven, twenty twenty eight, which would necessitate inflationary costs being included.
Is it also, I don't, I don't know if it's a guarantee that would necessarily go up as well. It could go down. Potentially.
Yep.
But again, we don't, after we do this increase, we don't have to do a lot of increase here. Because as. Bill has. After put, we do actually do what's minimum seller value that we really have to.
Eight years, we're twice that and I give two point.
Yeah.
And by a dollar. And if you need certain amount of debt coverage to sort of doing this now, issue that coverage. If I simply just add zero in that coverage.
We basically have a lower credit rating, if you want to put it in individual terms. So doing this, we bank some money so that we have a better credit rating and we can get those better loans.
And we might not be having additional increase to that sixty five, seventy percent that we were on last year. At this time next year, so we might be just done with our increases any year from now, once we start seeing good.
I wouldn't be that optimistic, but you're right, am I? Might be a lower than we think.
A lower increase.
Yeah, you're right. Yeah. We can.
Less the increase that we need to have.
Yeah, that'd be great.
What the market ends up doing.
Absolutely.
But this is what we're going to need to do.
Yep.
To start the process of actually replacing our forty year old sewer treatment plant. So I'm going to make a motion. Easy motion, right? Make a motion to approve the residence of twenty twenty five test. Take sewer rates.
Oh, second name.
I have a motion. I have a second. Do we have any further discussion? I'll call a roll call vote then.
President Lenz.
Aye.
Trustee Ibert.
Aye.
Trustee Frank.
Aye.
Trustee Abeglin. Trustee Doorward.
Aye.
Trustee Serin.
Aye.
Trustee Van Room.
Aye.
And the motion's passed. Next item on the agenda, correspondence.
Um, I shared, um, a notice from Ozaki County in a very safe place about a public hearing, and I think on October tenth. Um, Pete, can I look at it?
Yes.
October first. Oh, my gosh. Sorry.
At eleven AM.
At eleven AM, yes. Um, uh, to discuss the farmland preservation plan, um. That is.
Will you recognize it in the, uh?
I will, yes.
I'd like you to stroll.
There it is. Nope, that's. There it is. Um, yes, thank you, Jeff. It is October first at eleven AM at the administration center room. Um, A two hundred, um, and that's to discuss the, um, farmland preservation plan, um, that allows, um. Municipalities with an interest in, um, applying for, um, uh, farmland preservation, um, tax credits, um, to do so.
Yeah, is this something we, I mean.
So I guess my understanding is that there are only two municipalities whose residents participate in this, in the tax credit that this plan allow. Eligu- uh, makes eligible municipalities for, um, and that's the town of Fredonia and the town of Belgium. And I, I think that, um, because of the, um. The, um, data center that is being planned, there is a kind of a heightened interest in, um, farmland preservation this year.
We'll see then.
So I thought I'm gonna share it as a neighboring community and as a communication from the county.
Right.
Are we gonna be able to, uh. Assume credits from them?
Um, no, there's no eligible land in the village of Fredonia, but there is in the town of Fredonia and the town of Belgium. And so, so it doesn't really impact the village. It impacts surrounding communities.
So attendance to it, or at least attention to it, might be informative just for future planning for our own community. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Pete, for sharing.
Items for future consideration. Do we then have a motion to adjourn?
Adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Well, any discussion, debate? All right, we need to take a roll call vote on that.
President Lenz.
Aye.
Trustee Ibert.
Aye.
Trustee Frank.
Aye.
Trustee Abeglin.
Aye.
Trustee Doorward.
Aye.
Trustee Serin.
Aye.
Trustee Van Room.
Aye.
All right, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
All right, thank you. Good night.